Here.
Councilmember. Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Missel.
Here.
Councilmember Shear.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Present.
Councilmember Hadfield.
Here.
Bearhouse.
I'm here. Uh, any council members have an agenda update? Um, I've got a couple here.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, Kathy.
Um, yeah, actually, I had two. Um, I noticed on the, uh, Public Works Committee, uh, agenda for February 23rd that the water main replacement had been put on the inactive list. And then for this meeting, it was completely gone, not on any list. Um, I think this is a really critical decision that should be made by the full council, not by, um, a city, um, employee or a, or a small part of the council. I think we all need to talk about it. And so I would like to put that on the agenda for tonight. And I'd also like to make a motion to, uh, uh, consider that. Um, and my second, uh, my second agenda update is regards impact fees. Uh, we have a really large, um, development coming into town. Uh, we brought the idea of impact, impact fees up a couple of times in the past. And each time the city has told us that we can't do that because it requires an annexation. Um, didn't make sense to me, so I got ahold of the municipal research services center and they say that's not the case. Um, and so I think this is something that we need to talk about. And actually, we need to talk about it quickly. So that's, that's all I have for now.
Um, okay.
So there was a motion. Do I, can I second that motion to talk about it?
Well, I think the motion was to put it on the agenda. And, you know, we're talking about the transmission line repair. Is that what you're saying, Kathy?
My first, my first one was the, the transmission line repair.
And you made a motion that you want to add to the agenda?
Well, I, I know, I was just saying, no, I was saying that I, that I would like to add that the discussion to the agenda and during the discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
So can I just clarify on the Public Works Committee? That it was on our, our project list. Uh, it's on our ongoing project list. Um, there's two valves, pressure relief valves that we want to get repaired on the transmission line as of right now. And now we're assessing the clear well as a possible pri- a possible priority because of the excess, extensive leakage that we have out of our clear well. So that's why the direction kind of changed from replacing the transmission line itself to fixing the pressure relief valves that have never been put on there, that will have to be put on there later on for a new transmission line. So we're going to get that done because we see that as a top priority and a top, top fault point or fail, point of failure. And then we're seeing that the clear wells are a, if you go up there, you'll see that it's, it's pretty bad. So we need to, uh, possibly do something with the clear well. So that's, i- it's there, it's on the project list. We did talk about it though.
Okay, um, but I, I understand that Patty Murray's office has sent, has sent around an email, Tom Missel brought this up last time, um, uh, soliciting ideas for infrastructure repairs. And, um, I think we'd be remiss to not, um, talk about replacing the transmission line now and getting the information to Patty Murray immediately.
If we can, for sure, maybe admin committee can work on that because that sounds like definitely something that admin can point direction on Patty Murray and maybe get funding going that way.
So would I be correct in assuming the city has not, um, contacted Patty Murray? At this point?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, okay, um, I think we need to talk about this with the full council and make sure that, that we direct the city to, um, to, um, get ahold of Patty Murray since she is soliciting, um, ideas and wants, uh, the new administration wants to give money, uh, for infrastructure.
Second to put that on the agenda.
Thank you.
You second to that, Nolan?
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll put a discussion, uh, right after in the news, the new business section then. Um, other agenda updates, uh, Angela sent in an email just after our deadline, um, but we, we did put it in there. So depending on when council actually looked at the, uh, attached comments, whether they're written or emailed, um, Angela's, uh, email is in there.
Could I ask? Could I ask if the, if, if the, if there's any second for the impact, for discussing impact fees?
Can we talk about that during council concerns, Kathy?
Um, okay, it's something we need to move on pretty quickly, but I'll, I will, I will talk about it then. Thank you.
Why do we need to move on it quickly?
Uh, because we have a very large, uh, development coming into town. And if we want to, um, uh, impose impact fees, those have to be in place ahead of time. That requires, um, a study and some hearings. And so it's not something we can really put off.
So, so yeah, Kathy, I mean, we, we've talked about discussing this before. So, so the impact fees that we talked about before, when we discussed it with them are, you know, may be used for new infrastructure, so main extensions for the city. So in the case of the large development that you're referencing, that would be on the developer to pay those, pay for those types of things. So we can't use it for existing infrastructure, it would only be for new infrastructure.
Correct. Yes, we, um, yes, we would, it can be used to, um, to fund impacts to roads, schools, fire departments and, um, open space. So, um...
Yeah, so according to MRSC, when we had looked into this before, we can only use that for new, we can't use it for anything existing that we have. So if we were creating a new park or new open space, that's correct.
So Kathy, the Confortera would be able to use that for their benefit, is what Michelle's saying. We wouldn't as a city because we aren't putting in the new utilities. It would be Forterra and their development putting in the city. So they would be able to apply for those monies, is what I'm sort of hearing from Michelle because they're not existing services for us as a city. They would be new services for, for Terra's development. So I think what she's saying is they would be able to apply for those.
Well, there should be some kind of guideline of like, exactly what Kathy's saying is there should be some impacts towards our schools, towards our fire department, towards possibly even the police impact. Um, and then of course our utilities, like you're mentioning Jeff, but there should be some kind of impact, uh, fee study for that development and any future developments that we see. I totally, I totally agree. So...
I need to offer impact studies. I just, we're talking about the funding and that was what she's talking about is applying for the funding for it.
Well, they, the, the, the development pays the fees to, um, to offset, uh, whatever impacts that they have to our infrastructure.
Or shared infrastructure, yeah.
I mean, certainly we're talking about roads going in there.
Yeah. Especially the roads that are going to be affected on Second Street and A Street.
Hey guys, this is Leah. What I hear from Michelle though is that, um, you know, that, that will be part of the development process is determining what those fees are, what the scope of it is, um, you know, what, what are the impacts? We don't know what the impacts are until we know what's proposed. Um, and then, you know, determining what those impacts are costs money, of course, and that's on the developer.
Yes.
But, um, you know, and Michelle will have to correct me here, but I don't know that we determine what those fees are ahead of time because I don't, it's all situational. So it's not like, you know, ninety dollars for linear foot of public right of way or whatever.
Well, I mean, looking at, looking at Ellensburg's, um, uh, fee structures, uh, they have, they impose, actually, um, uh, they impose about half of the, uh, uh, building permit, um, costs are, for them, are impact fees. And those are, those are, that's a fee structure that's built into their, um, to their, uh, city and then that, then they, they impose those fees ahead of time.
Yes, that's, that's correct, Kathy. So for example, in Ellensburg, in, within their comprehensive plan, they determine that will be treated in the future or walking paths or those sorts of things. And that's what those impact fees are to, um, to pay for, for expansion of those items. So in the case of Forterra, if they were to develop this property, they would pay for all of the infrastructure that was additionally needed within the city to serve that development. And any future maintenance would become the city's responsibility, but the impact fees can't be used for maintenance, is what MRSC had previously told us.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I, I get that part.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, what I don't get is, is why we're not, um, investigating whether, um, uh, those fees could be used for roads and for, you know, for new, you know, new, new walking paths in, in the forest, for instance, or, um, if there is going to be a forest. And, um, you, um, you know, obviously there'll be impacts to the schools and the fire department.
Yeah, so we still are examining that. I, I guess I thought the question Mayor was asking was why this needed to be an immediate priority. So that, that, that process hasn't really stopped, we're still looking into it. It's just a matter of, like you said, we do have to, we do have to do a study and we do have to do all those things. And that also is going to have to be incorporated within our comprehensive plan. So it, it requires a, a lengthy update. So for the immediate future and the Forterra development, it, it's, it's something that they would be footing the bill for, not necessarily the city, I guess is all I was clarifying.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't realize, I mean, you just said that, that you are looking into it right now? Is that correct?
Yeah, well, we have been, yep. So the first step in doing that would be to, to acquire the funds to actually do an impact study. And then that, that data that was collected and that report, so similar to other previous studies that we've done, that would be utilized within a comprehensive plan update that would delineate, um, just like we do, well, just like tonight, you've got the CIP on there, the picture CIP. So you would delineate projects for expansion within the city. And that might be trails in the forest, or that might be, um, additional roads. Um, and those projects would be dictated and then we would assess fees, impact fees for new development in accordance with that study.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, that, um, the city is looking into this. Could we maybe have a, you know, a report, um, about this at the next meeting or, or some sort of way that...
Point of order. Sorry, this is Councilmember Hadfield, point of order here, we're just talking about agenda updates and we're getting really far off.
I agree. And Kathy, we'll put together, uh, something before the next, uh, meeting to address... Um, and as far as agenda updates go, uh, I have been talking with, uh, different council members and we're going to move as has been requested over and over. I'm going to move the citizen comments to the beginning of the meeting and I'm going to remove the non-agenda item restrictions so the citizen comments can be on anything they want to talk about. Um, they will be, uh, I'll mention them when it comes up. Um, I'm going to be putting it for this meeting at least, since it's kind of new. I'm going to put it after the announcements and presentations before new business. Um, also, um, I, we're going to put together a written summary of all the letters and emails that we received that we attached for you guys, um, just so that at each, uh, agenda or at, at each meeting, the, the emails and, and letters, uh, will have a summary from the previous meeting with, uh, who they came from, the date, and then, and then what action , uh, staff and I myself has taken to try to help, uh, understand or, or answer the questions that are asked in these different things. And, and we're going to try to do a, a good job of, of acknowledging the, uh, the comments that are made. And, uh, now we're not going to be answering them during this meeting, but as questions come up, if it's appropriate, we will be, uh, probably adding that to the summary, uh, the next meeting as well. And identifying to the different individuals how we're going to answer their questions. So tonight's consent agenda checks and EFTs as follows, March 9th, 2021, account payable check, 17062 through 17075 in the amount of $5,374.62. February 2021, ACH accounts payable in the amount of $12,427. Payroll from March 5th, 2021 in the amount of $16,873.93. And a minute from the February 23rd, 2021 council meeting.
I'll make it...
For the consent agenda to be approved, pay the bills.
Second.
I'll second, yeah.
Any discussion here, council? Fall in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say name and your name, please. Okay, now we'll move on to the administrative reports. Uh, so Police Department, uh, Chief Land or anybody from the Police Department on this call?
Yes, Mayor, this is Turk, I'm here.
Yes, sir.
So all y'all should have got an email forwarded, uh, being I wasn't able to attend the last council meeting. I sent out this, uh, a bullet point email trying to catch everybody up. And I wanted to see if anybody had any questions on that before we start. Okay, well, no questions, just a, a few things to add to that email. Um, as of late, this last week, our Civil Service Commission met and, uh, was a hybrid meeting through Zoom and in person. And the reason for that was to update the rules and regulations for our civil service that has not been done in several years. So they were provided, um, our old civil service rules book and current rules and regulations of other cities that they could read and choose. They came up with, uh, the new wording that, um, has been now voted on and accepted. So those new civil service rules are now updated and will be going forward under that, uh, book. Also, uh, reported that Officer Bennett Flick was at the CJTC training for two weeks as a fire instructor. He is back and will state certified, uh, so we're proud of him for doing that. And finally, we get, uh, Alec Johnson back from the academy. He actually graduates tomorrow. He was supposed to graduate February, but, uh, due to COVID problems they had at the academy, there were several weeks and up to, uh, two weeks at a time where they were put in quarantine and sent back home. So that's why there was a delay in the graduation process. Um, but we put his to work every time he came home and, and started him on the FTO program. The FTO program is a 14-week program, um, and that usually occurs after the academy graduation. So by utilizing our time to start the FTO program while he was actually in the academy, um, it's going to speed that process up so he'll be able to, uh, be on his own at a much quicker pace, which of course benefits us all. So we're good on that. And just a quick comment, um, reference Councilperson Cook, impact fees for the development that we going in, in Roslin, it'll far impact the Police Department more than the Fire Department. And, um, I'm waiting for anybody to contact us. We have been going through this in Clayville, I'm sure you're aware of the 47 North development that is proposed at this time. And I did a bunch of late work on that and helped with others to develop a staffing model to show what impact, uh, a new development like that would cause. And that staffing model can easily be used, uh, for Roslin as well. So we're ready to provide the numbers and the information when asked.
Cool.
Great.
That's all I got for now unless there's questions.
Okay, thanks, Chief Land. Um, next up, uh, will be all of the Fire Department, Chief O'Shaughnessy or anybody from the Fire Department, uh, on the call? Want to make some reports? Okay, um, Nolan, did you want to speak to the Public Works Committee?
Yeah, so Public Works Committee met today. We meet every second and fourth Tuesday at 3:30, right here on Zoom. Uh, we had an awesome meeting with Theo and Michelle and our, uh, newest Public Works employee, Bubba Simplot. He filled us in with a bunch of knowledge, a bunch of, um, projects that he is looking at or trying to complete. Um, I was just overall thrilled with his report that he had. Um, Theo reported that we have some, uh, updates with the SCADA slash old Windows 7 computer that's running our water system right now as a priority to get changed out. So he gave us some numbers for that. Um, so we'll hopefully be sending that to admin or whoever makes those decisions, probably do the cheaper route and get that going and as soon as possible done. Um, but as of right now, no, that's, that's probably it. I want to thank, uh, Mayor for getting Bubba on board. I think we have a great leader on our hands and I think, uh, we can, uh, get some work done here this spring, summertime.
Hey, Lilia, Bubba's here, so Bubba, you want to say something?
Uh, sure, thanks, Nolan. Uh, yeah, it's glad to be aboard, it's, uh, I mean, it feels really good, uh, to be up here. I definitely like working with everybody. Um, basically, I mean, I, my second full week, so got a lot of stuff going on. Um, biggest thing is we're doing our daily routine with the water and sewer samples. Um, it's kind of like Nolan said, he pretty much filled in everything we talked about with committee, but, uh, safety's been a big issue, we're going, uh, through all that. No one has us going to CPR class, uh, getting a flanker's class, going through safety gear, um, just so the guys are good out in the streets, at the shop, um, law organization and really, I, I mean, trying to make, what I want to do is make, you know, our Public Works Department more self-sufficient. There's a lot of stuff that we can do where we can save the town money, so.
Great goal.
Um, is admin, anybody from admin want to speak? I mean, obviously you guys haven't had a meeting, but, uh, you want to...
This is Leah. Um, we did get a report from the Treasurer with our, um, just our year-to-date budget with, uh, revenue expenditures. So, um, we're just going to look at that and then if we want to convene on that or any other matter, uh, we'll set a meeting for that.
That's great. Uh, Jeff, you got something for us from Cemetery?
No, we're trying to meet, um, either this week or next. We need, um, I think Dick's going to set something up with Sarah, so until I get something else, we'll go from there.
Leah, do you want to speak on the Citizen Advisory Committee? Or is anybody from the Citizen Advisory Committee on that would like to speak?
I'll say something if, if there aren't any CAC members. Okay, um, just a quick overview, a couple of things that came out of the meeting. Um, we had, uh, Tanya, volunteer and, or maybe she's an intern, but, and Darcy Matur from the Nature Conservancy were at the meeting. Uh, they are starting some outreach on their future forest work that they're doing, um, on those lands that they are holding. Uh, and they might be able to include, uh, the urban forest as, you know, indicating that there's going to be, you know, forest activities in there, subject to trail closure. Um, so I am working with them to find out, you know, they want to serve exactly what, but, so that would be great because that would, uh, help us, of course, to communicate which everyone wants to recreate that some access is going to be closed for a while. Um, and then also there, we might have some assistance from volunteers for, uh, performing recordings for the bird monitoring. And then we could use those, um, to find a, you know, professional to listen to the audio, uh, which would save, um, you know, on the cost of having someone actually taking their time sitting at all the different points. Um, so I needed to work with Treasurer and find out, um, what dollars we might still have from 2018 that we could use for that if possible, um, for what we need to stand for. Uh, and then also going to have, um, the CAC working on assisting us with our requests for qualifications for the land stewardship plan update. And that's all for now, thanks.
Thanks, Leah. Um, is anybody from the Friends of the Library or the Library Board on that would like to talk? I will say that we did go out to bid and we, uh, there was a meeting and there were four contractors that walked through the business with the architect. And so that's a positive because none came last time. Uh, okay, so next we'll move, Michelle have something for the Planning Commission?
Uh, yeah, so just real briefly, the Planning Commission has the master plan, um, the development code as well as the previously drafted, uh, Dark Side ordinance in front of them, or they will actually on the Dark Side ordinance at the next meeting, they looked at the master plan development ordinance this weekend, they are, uh, they have kind of gone through that and done some proposed edits. It will go back to the attorney, um, and then again, back to them at their next meeting. So that'll be coming before you guys here in the next, well, probably end of April, early May, um, for your guys'...
Okay, I hope I'm not forgetting anybody, but that'll, that'll be all the reports. Um, as far as announcements go, uh, I was going to announce about the Simplot being hired as the lead Public Works, but that's already been done. Um, I did appoint Ken Blanford and Kerry Hand Speeder to the Citizen Advisory Committee. Um, and we still have one open position that, uh, I, I believe I have at least one application for and possible another one coming in. So hopefully soon we'll have a full, uh, CAC. And then next up, we have a presentation from Forterra. Are there Sherry? Sherry, can you... Oh, Rebecca?
Yes, I'm here, sorry about that, I couldn't unmute myself. I'm Rebecca Duchesne with Forterra. Um, as most of you know, we're collaborating with the community on what the future will be for the number four mine site. Tonight I have the rest of my team here as well. You all know Sherry Marusa, our most famous member of our team, and the most important. And we also have Susan Melrose and Daniel Osterhay. So we're all here and I have three updates to provide to you guys tonight. The first is that our very first community meeting in Roslin is going to be on Wednesday, March 31st. So Daniel's going to put his email in the chat, that's how you can register for the meeting. We're going to hold it via Zoom, it'll be 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Um, we're going to be sending out postcards to all Roslin addresses, those will go out next week and that'll give that same information to everyone in Roslin. And in addition, um, we'll be posting all around town, um, that information so that hopefully we get as many people as possible. We'd love to, um, have a lively conversation and start talking about what the priorities might be. Secondly, we have met with the planning advisory team that I mentioned in our last update already twice and we'll meet them the third time next week. That's been a really huge advantage and resource to us to be able to have that group of Roslin leaders together to help us, um, to help us plan and how best to engage with the Roslin leaders. And so we're really grateful to them for volunteering their time. Finally, since our earliest conversations about the number four mine site, one of the things that have been brought to our attention is that these, there's a need for parking in that small triangular piece of property that's on the northwest corner of the property adjoining the coal mine trail. This was something that, um, the RDA brought to our attention that even back in 1998, the plan for the coal mine trail in, talked about surface parking in that small triangular piece of property. So I think the council already knows, but we wanted to bring forward that we've been collaborating and trying to work on, um, a way to fund that piece of the property towards the community parking area. So we've been working on that planning. We're just in early days now, nothing has been decided or committed. We're just looking for planning, um, for planning what that might be and funding to make that happen, maybe even sooner than the, the development itself down the line. So we want to thank the council for their partnership in thinking that through and helping us, um, look for funding for that. And that's the end of my updates.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions, council? Okay, we'll move on to the citizens section, that first... Okay, we'll move on to the citizens section. That first up for council, I just want to point out that there were six written comments from different members of our community. I want to make sure you guys read those. I believe staff has answered each one of them already. And like I said, we'll have a summary for the next, for the next meeting. I'm just going to put it on the cloud. I'm not going to talk about it during the next meeting. It'll just be available when we post the agenda for the next meeting on there for you guys to peruse and review or the public. So next, we're going to do the citizen comments. I'll say again that I've removed the non-agenda item stipulations. So I'll allow citizens to comment on anything they would like, including agenda items. It will be held to three minutes. And we're going to have to be strict about it because there's 10 people that asked to speak tonight. So first up is Doug Johnson. Doug, you there? Okay, yep.
Thanks for serving. I appreciate what everybody's doing on the council and the committees and the mayor. I know we do not real well paid for doing this, so it's appreciated. I was on council in 1980s and 1990s. My first item I wanted to talk about is citizens' comments, which I I really appreciate you moving it towards the start of the meeting. In the old days, I've been here 46 years, we didn't have time limits and we didn't have to notify the city before the meeting that we wanted to comment. It was sometimes very robust. Kind of a different format, what you call it. There was discussion back and forth with people, the council and people almost conversationally during citizens for the, from the public, comments from the public. And the other thing that was really helpful, I thought there was, there was no time limit and and we had very robust conversations. Granted, this makes meetings go long. I remember getting out at 11:30 at night. We started at 7:00. That's seemed like part of the job. I'm going to run out of time if I'm not careful here. So that's, that's one of my issues. What makes Roslyn really unique for all of us are the people, of course, the town character, and I think the ridge. And the water system, I wanted to talk a little bit about the water system. There have been three major crises that I know of in the time I've been here. One was in about 1980 when I first got on council for the next three or four years. There was severe pressure from Burlington Northern to log the watershed. A huge effort by the city, especially by Mayor Deiblis and some of the members of the community to annex the watershed, which we did, which stopped that action cold. And we saved our watershed, which I think is critical. And then in the 1990s, the WUCC committee was considering joining Cleelum in a region-wide water supply system. I fought that vigorously. I think Roslyn has a very unique system. We want to stay independent at all costs. In my mind, I don't know where else in the state or the country you get a water supply system like we have it coming out of the mountains a few miles away.
30 seconds, Doug.
It's very, yeah, I've got my ticker going down, 18, anyway. And then we had problems with water rights that Jerry Porter worked on for 12 years and we got that straightened out. So please maintain what we have, maintain the transmission line, do whatever you can to keep the supply we have. It's historically important. It's important for our supply. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Doug.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up is Janine Brodean. Yeah, we won't start the timer until you start talking.
Hi there. Thanks for having me. I want to echo what Doug said, actually. I've got video going. If you can hear me, that's enough. Thank you. I'm always concerned about historical preservation as I know council members are. Our water system is when the key part makes Roslyn unique. People have grown up with that water for generations and I hope many other people get to grow up with it for many other generations. I've always heard that New York City water was the best and it didn't hold a candle to what we have here. I really appreciate the work that's happening with water system from what Nolan said. It sounds like we're going to get fixed and we're going to maintain that for a really long time. I also was going to say something about dark skies, but I heard Michelle mention that the commission's going to be looking at that. And so I just want to say I really appreciate that because that's another historic feature that we need to maintain. It's a challenge that never because of all the development we're going on. So I will concede my other two minutes to someone else very much.
Thank you, Janine. Next up this evening is Joe Pegg.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Joe.
Mayor members of the council, at the February 23rd Public Works Committee meeting, there was a request from Senator Patty Murray's office was passed to the committee by Tom Missile. And the request was about infrastructure needs for the community of Roslyn. And I want to urge you, please, responding to that request, your number one priority. The mayor and council should contact the senator's office directly and now. Also, contact Senator Cantwell and Congressman Kim Schreier about including Roslyn's capital improvement infrastructure projects on the new administration's infrastructure plans. We should also apply to USDA for funding for our projects. Number one, replacing that 110-year-old Dahmerie line, and also replacing the backbone of the storm system through town. They should be at the top of our requests. As you know, last summer I contacted Marty Kanaski, the loan specialist at USDA in Yakima, and they have funding available now at 1.875 interest in a 40-year term loans. USDA funded the replacement of our water system that we did in 92 and also the treatment plant in 1998. And also we use community development block grants that come from the housing and urban development. I have never seen a better opportunity for Roslyn to get projects funded and built because of the president's infrastructure plan. The Dahmerie Creek line is 110 years old and this is the infrastructure. I hope that Roslyn would be at the front of the line with a shovel-ready project and our senators and congressperson behind us when we go to secure federal funding. Please, you can do this and this is in your hands. Also, I wanted to comment on the logging in the urban forest. Please, I would encourage the council to abide by the legal obligations and agreements that acquired these lands for Roslyn to protect and manage. And also the land stewardship plan that governs that management. This rush process to log the ridge is not in compliance with the plan and the required consultation with New Sun Cadia and Conservation Northwest has not been done.
30 seconds, Joe.
Logging may person the beetle problem, not solve it. If the wary is fire danger, then replacement of the Dahmerie Creek water line should be a priority because water's necessary to fight fires. It also seems to me that there's important decisions being made outside of council meetings. As an example, the Public Works Project list in early January shows water plant upgrades being waited for fully to come along. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. But next up is Peg Bryant.
Okay, hi.
Hi, Peg. I can hear you.
Okay, WebEx is different than Zoom. I can speak to that. So, yeah, thanks for, I really appreciate you moving the citizen comments to the beginning of the meeting because I think that gives us an opportunity to comment on agenda items that are on the agenda, which seems to make sense. So thanks for that. And I'd like to support the comments that were submitted in writing, some of them Doug Kilgore and Joe, as well as Ellie and Jen and Keegan. And so I really hope that we can honor the history a little more than we've been able to do. I think we've lost a lot of historical perspective from new people coming in, which is I'm not opposed to new people coming in. I just don't want to lose the history. And I was one of the founding members of Ridge in 1986 and was, have been on the Citizens Advisory Committee since its inception and was chair for like five years. And so we've done a lot of work leading to this point for it to be apparently disregarded, a lot of it. I appreciate that Michelle put forward the Declaration of Covenant Restricting Use that showed clearly that logging was not permitted except in compliance with the LSP and that it can't be amended without written approval, as Joe and others have stated, Conservation Northwest and New Sun Cadia LLC. So that long-term act was, we were so proud of that. And for that to be forgotten and then moved to a three-year one is fun. And then regarding to monitoring, monitoring issues, Leah just suggested some opportunities there. But that, those, part of the monitoring is compare it to previous monitoring, which is done in a standardized way with people knowledgeable in the circles. And so it's, it needs to be compared to previous monitoring and done in a standardized fashion. I think that yeah, finally, great to have more expanded cap after a year and a half or so of waiting for appointees. And I hope the council approves those appointees. And I'm hoping that
30 seconds, Peg.
Criteria looking at would be their knowledge of forestry and the forest. And I agree with, the other thing with dark skies is I, we've been hoping that to happen for years. And I'm wondering with those hotel motel tax dollars, if one of those grants could be applied for supporting dark skies because that's a tourist attraction for the city. So that, so retrofitting some things. Okay.
Thank you, Peg.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got Mr. Courtney Cook. Courtney, can you do star three? We are not seeing you on the lift. Staff has to unmute you, but we need to know which person you are, which phone you are. It's either asterisk three or star three. Or are you there, Courtney? You know, Courtney, I'll come back to you. Maybe you could use Peg's phone. So next up then, we'll wait for you, Courtney. We'll bring you up to the end. Next up will be Doug Kilgore.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Doug Kilgore, 145 North Fifth Street. I'd like to speak to the concern that council member Cook raised tonight with respect to our water line. I'm very concerned that Senator Murray's inquiry to our city received no reply. And I'm more concerned that the project has disappeared from any active project list that I can see and that it had been on the inactive list before it disappeared from the inactive list. At the point when Congress is ready to fund infrastructure projects, we're going to need to be ready with something that's a lot more shovel-ready than what we have today. And I would just like to hear members of the council say that they're committed to replacing the entire water line and not simply short repairs or certain repairs. I would appreciate a full-throated endorsement of that project from the members of the council and particularly from the mayor. Thank you. Also, I wish to express appreciation for the change in policy that will allow citizens to speak at the beginning of the meeting and without restriction. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Next up would be Ellie Baloo.
Ellie, can you, are you there?
Can you hear me?
There, yes.
All right. That was a yes?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, I can't hear any of you, so I'm just going to speak to the void here. First of all, I do appreciate moving the public comments forward and allowing them to address the matters before the city. However, I would like to point out that the documents that are available for people to review before a meeting, although they were digitally available last Friday, were not present in the council packet before the deadline for public comments. Secondly, although I have seen Michelle do a beyond-human job in responding to the public comments, I would like to point out that these comments are directed to the council regarding council actions and decisions. And I would like to hear the council's positions on these matters. If staff would like to provide some kind of direction, some kind of information to the council that's interesting, but I am interested in the council's positions on these matters, as are many members of the public. I would also like to point out that let's see here, that the CAC appointment has not yet been confirmed by the mayor's choice in appointments for the CAC membership have not been appointed by, approved by the council, which they need to be. However, they attended the 3-3 meeting as voting members and did vote. So there's a problem there, Houston. And the FPA, I don't have words for how frustrated I am. There is a different version of this FPA that was available as of sometime today, I believe. There's no CAC review of significant changes since what went before them, which they did not go through page by page. They didn't review it at their meeting. There is no possible public review of this. And I am really seriously doubtful the council has in any way reviewed what just came through, the newest. So the idea is that we are going to move ahead with no thoughtful consideration. And this, the reason that we're bailing on a cumulatively designed project with the LTA, the 15-year FPA, is still doubtful to me. Supposedly it works better for DNR. And finally, I'd like to point out that the mayor in mentioning that he was talking to council about how to change public comments, that his talking with council on this matter outside of a council meeting violates the Public Meetings Act. These are the matters that are supposed to come before the public and be discussed in public. I don't know what else you're all emailing each other about, but that is in violation of the Public Meetings Act and I would ask you to cease and desist. Thank you very much.
Next up, we've got Keegan Fangler. Fangler, I'm sorry, Keegan.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, this is Keegan Fangler. And I spoke to you guys last week about, you know, just kind of frustrations with transparency kind of coming in from the outside. And so I'm happy to hear that you're going to summarize letters and to kind of give us heads up on actions. That'll be easier for us as citizens to, when we can't make meetings, to be able to maybe track a little bit better. So thank you for doing that. And I just want to reiterate, I said it in my letter also, you know, that I really think the water system is an important piece of our city. I said this last week, you know, having a resilient water system, we're watching what happened in Texas. Yes, it was a freak storm, but guess what? We can have those too. We also have an earthquake problem in Washington State. Yes, they happen long apart, but if we ever have the Casadeal Subduction Zone earthquake, that water line that's 110 years old is going. So that means no water to the city and you literally don't have a city without water. So I was at the Public Works meeting today. I happened to have a chance to sit and listen. I'm glad they're all being, these are all these projects are being discussed. But I think, you know, after being in town for a decade now and after being in town for a decade now, and it's just, it's time to start moving on these. We need to be as proactive as possible. And I know not everybody was on the Council 10 years ago, but, you know, let's step up. We have a federal government who wants to get into infrastructure. We have our local senators who are reaching out. Now is the time. So also, welcome, Bubba. I'm glad you're on. I think you're going to do a great job and kind of got your hands full at the moment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Keegan. Next up, we have Mary Comas. Mary, do the asterisk, figure star Mary, you should get something.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
All right. A few things. First of all, what many people have commented about regarding the infrastructure improvements, I was pretty thoroughly disappointed to hear that no one in the city has moved forward on requesting the funds in the last two weeks. So I just kind of want to add to the group of people saying that. The next thing is, I, the Council member Hafield mentioned that a year-to-date budget, I assume like a first fiscal quarter, is coming out. And I'm requesting that that be published for the citizens to be able to see, perhaps as an attachment to the next Council meeting agenda. And then, oh, I wanted to ask about recording of meetings, because at the end of the Public Works meeting, Council member Weiss requested that this meeting be recorded. So I'd just kind of like to know if it is being recorded and how that has changed, because I previously asked for meetings to be recorded or to access recordings of them, and have been told that you were advised by Council not to record any meetings, which leads me into my next point, which I must have much appreciate the fact that citizen comments are now being opened up to non-agenda items and moved to earlier in the meeting. I wanted to, I had many comments on the proposed viola contract two weeks ago, but I was told, when I said I wanted to make a comment about that, I was told that I could not comment on that, which I don't believe that anyone else received that. And then later that evening, I received a further message saying that public comments were going to be possibly cut entirely. So this is quite the 180 that's been made as of the opening of this meeting. And I say, I appreciate that, and I'm sure many other people do. And I also wanted to ask, or at least have Council members start thinking about when City Hall will again be open to the public. COVID restrictions have been loosened city-state, countrywide. It seems like it would be entirely feasible to have a period of time during the day or during the week or something that citizens could come into City Hall, particularly
Thirty seconds, Ben.
Particularly in terms of public records request. I know that there's an additional charge if you would like to get a physical copy of the request. A good way to avoid that would to just go in and read the papers, and then the city staff isn't having to spend their time making comments and mailing them to citizens. I think that with the size of City Hall and the availability of the large gym area upstairs, that meetings could be held in public, but definitely there should be some time that City Hall should be open for public to come in, mass, whatever.
Thank you, Mary. Next up, we've got Jennifer Lipton.
Let's, can we go back to Courtney actually?
You know what, Jennifer, hold on for a sec. I think Courtney's on now. Courtney, are you available to go next?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Courtney.
Oh, yes. Thank you for giving me a second chance. I would also like to commend the Council for making the public comments early in the meeting. I think that's important for the discussion in general moving forward. And I think it's important also to be able to discuss, as a citizen, whatever I want to at City Council, and not necessarily what you want to talk about during the public comment. But I think I should be able to do that when I come, whenever. I'd like to support what everyone else has been saying, especially Doug and Ellie and Peg. And I'd like to say that, for example, on this water line, I mean, seriously, people, for 20 years, we've been discussing with bated breath this thing may fail any minute, and we'd be screwed if there was a fire. So, I mean, if it does fail, then the fire, everyone's going to say it. The Council is incompetent, or worse, and then whatever. Because this is known in advance. You know this in advance. You've been on this for a long time. You have the money. Interest rates are as low as they're ever going to be. You need to move on this, and stop delaying these important projects. Also, I'd like to say on the forestry thing, I don't know why the forestry thing is such a difficult problem for the city. I mean, it's the same as every other issue, it seems to me. You have a public, for example, you have a capital improvement. You get an engineering, you get, you know, expert advice. You go out to bid, you find a reasonable, a credible contractor. The city works hard to follow through on the details that the contract proceeds exactly as we anticipated. So how is that different than this forest? Seriously, how is that different than the forest? Why is this a problem?
I'm done. Thank you, Courtney. Last up is Jennifer Lipton.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having the meeting tonight. Can you hear me okay? I did send a letter in, and so thank you for the public comments that you had, because that was one of the points I put on there. I'd also like to say that I do agree and support the comments that were made earlier regarding infrastructure and concerns about that. And I know our town is in major transition, and I know you guys have a lot going on. And then, of course, there's COVID on top of it and all the other restrictions that have happened. So I do understand some of these concerns and issues that have been going on. In my letter, I did comment also on Councilwoman Adams' issue of the concerns of bringing in speed limit signs. And I really would love to see us try to consider that as our town is just continuing in popularity, regardless of a pandemic, obviously. We still have a lot of people coming here. And so I think that is something to important, important to look for in grants. Lastly, in my letter, I had some typos in there that I, I just want to clarify for the record. I said something, I would like to say that please consider the information that we need from the forest enthusiasts, or forest pathologists, and people working on this issues and that have been. There's a lot of brain trust that has gone into the plans for the forest, and we continue to do that. Lastly, I would like to say, you know, I know there's so much going on. And being at Central and being in a Geography and Environmental Studies program, I have a lot of resources, including students that I was able to get two students to work for the city of Cleelam doing internships. There are students that like having this. They sometimes just need the credit. And so I presented at CAC about some students that may be interested in doing some drone and GIS work for the forest. And there's a lot of potential. And I think there's an opportunity to, you know, maybe if you guys are being strapped for resources and time, maybe looking into some of these other options that we have right here with people who are really, really committed to wanting to have experience. And so just lastly on that note, we also have a graduate program that I am a part of, the Cultural and Environmental Resource Management Program. And if you're interested, I can talk with you about how there can be a mutual funding opportunity where perhaps you fund a graduate student, which really, unfortunately, is not as expensive as you think. That is, and that they can contribute work towards like having a GA ship where they would work over 20 hours, about 20 hours a week, and do things for the city, but in a contract situation with Central on some type of research. So I'd be happy to talk with any of you about some of those potential ideas to help with all of these projects that might be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, so the first item of new business is our Department of Ecology agreement. It's a grant. Do we get a motion?
So to clarify for Council, this is the treatment component grant money that we got from Ecology for the CIP-1. So this is
I'll make a motion to accept the Department of Ecology agreement.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Council.
So what is our timeline look like on CIP-1 after this?
The 60% plan set is scheduled for June, is that right?
I believe so.
So we should see that. They are working on, so the treatment component came about when we had that kickoff meeting initially. I don't know if there was any Council present at that time, but Department of Ecology did want to see a treatment component for that project. And so that's what this agreement that you're just passing is for. So they're supposed to have that 60% plan set, and this will run, this treatment component will run concurrent with that project. So you should see something probably come before you informational, for informational purposes, probably in June, hopefully.
And by way of clarification, CIP-1 is the Penn Street bottleneck, right? The stormwater, the stormwater problems. I'm just clarifying that for, you know, there's a lot of people on this, on this meeting, and not everybody knows what CIP-1 is. That's all.
That's correct, yes. The Penn Place bottleneck, the storm, storm project. Any other discussion, Council? All in favor to accept this agreement, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say nay, your name, please. Next up, we'll, I'll just throw, I guess we'll call it unfinished business. We'll call the discussion on the transmission line that Kathy Cook and Nolan had requested to put on the agenda. So we don't really need a motion here, but if you guys wanted to kick off a discussion, you've obviously heard what the citizens have been saying. And I can't imagine anybody's against this replacement project, but.
Well, yeah, I don't imagine anyone's against it, but the point is that we need to be really for it. You know, we need to really get out there and start, start moving on it. I'm actually kind of shocked that the city didn't, when Tom Missel forwarded that, the request from Patty Murray, that we haven't actually taken them up on that. We have, you know, we can get money for the water transmission line. In addition, I would point out that in 2011, our utility rates were raised by quite a lot. And part of that was to pay for a $1.6 million loan that we were to use for replacing the transmission line. That loan was never taken out. And so we are all paying into, you know, we're paying the city to, you know, provide a transmission line, but nothing's happening. So I, I just think we need to like move forward as quickly as we can.
Hey, Nolan?
Yeah.
I think we give a little update just on the past year, the transmission line alone. I'm just going to give a little things, some things that happened just in the past year alone, even with COVID that we've done, that has not been done in 10 or 15 years with that transmission line. Number one is, is we've already been up there last year, and we've actually, the entire west side from where it starts at Downbury at the, at the pond, all the line has been brushed out and firewised in easements, which has not been done in 10 or 15 years to access that line. We've already made that progress, which was a tremendous amount of work last year with COVID and its restrictions. We've also identified multiple areas that never had signage in the past 10 to 15 years, that we're very lucky. This line has not been disrupted with the land activities out in that area. And we've identified all those locations and road crossings, which have never been done, to protect the line right now. And we put up safety hazards and signage for all of that. We've also repaired two major leaks that have caused wetlands on private property. These leaks are excessive. They've been going on for 10 to 15 years, and there's been nothing done about it. Since I've been on Council, this is something that's bothered me. And we have, we have resolved that problem in two days. We fixed these two leaks last year with COVID and the restrictions, and they're holding up fantastic. And these are things that have not been done in the past 10 to 15 years that have been going on. We made a tremendous amount of progress. So what I hear, it feels like we're not moving. We've done a ton of prep for this plan and project. We've identified through the past Public Work Director, the water hammer, that's a critical issue to keep in this line from having catastrophic failure. We are looking at those options to prevent the water hammer from happening, which is still part of the plan. Plus, we're looking at sections of pipe and areas that need to be replaced. But we also have a clear well that's in dire need at this point of possible replacement. And we have a lot to weigh between the clear well and the transmission line. Both of those are number-one products, not number-one items to look at. If we don't have the clear well, we don't have a pot to put the water in. And so how do we identify which is more important is really conversation. And we just are becoming aware of these items in the past month, that we've had a failure with the clear well after the repair that was done. Those repairs have not held up. It looks like the deterioration of the well has exceeded its amount of repair. So now we need to look at either replacing that clear well, have a bag-type liner, a poly-type liner. But we still need to have the pot to put the water in. The transmission line is always, in my mind, I think Nolan would say the same, is probably always the number-one item. There's obviously a step to get there. There's a pre-construction plan that we need to have an idea of to do and submit. We've also firewised that entire area up there and around the pond, which has not been done in 15 to 20 years. It is, it's, we put a lot of work in. And when I hear, when I hear people say that it's time to act, we've been acting on this. I mean, since I've been on Council, I think the transmission line's been a priority. Obviously, this year, the funding last year in January, which I believe you're on the call, Kathy, when we talked to the lady from USD Loans, she had said we can fill the applica, oh, I think you were. But they also told us we weren't ready for, to submit our application, is what I heard last time. And so that was the only reason the application wasn't submitted, because we were hot on it as soon as we had our meeting. And she'd said, fill it out, but please don't submit it. You're not ready. You need some pre-construction planning still, which is down the road. And then the clear well came up. So we have two major issues that we resolved into the transmission line that we need to decide what way we're going to go first.
And really, it's been kind of a transitional year with a new Public Works Director and a new engineer, or not Director, sorry, losing the past Director. And quite frankly, like Jeff said, there's been a lot done since we kind of started this motivation of lists to get done with the Public Works Department. So really, yeah, it's been kind of disheartening hearing that we haven't done anything and nothing's been really done. But for the last 10 to 15 years, nothing's been done. And this year, we have gotten a lot of hurdles overcome. And now we have a lot more that we're looking at getting done. So yeah, number-one priority is our transmission line. But we also have other things that are looking like, oh, no, we have to get our water treatment facility computer updated, and the equipment in there updated, and the clear well updated, because all that water running out of that clear well is money water. That's us losing money. The transmission line is catastrophic. If we lose that, if we have an earthquake, like it was stated, that's gone completely. It doesn't matter if we repair it or not. That bridge will be gone, and we will have a horrible time trying to redo it. So like I brought up in past committee meetings, we might need to look at an alternative as well, in case something like a catastrophic earthquake, or a dam break, or something in that line breaks, and we need a secondary water access. Because if something like that does happen, we are out for a very long time. And I'm glad that we do have now a public works team that is motivated and has a drive to want to get these projects done. And so I'm, I can't wait. I think we're going to get a lot done. I really am disappointed. Yeah, we haven't contacted Patty Murray and got that ball rolling. But a lot has been going in the office, a lot of time that people have been wanting our, our staff to use to devote other places. Yes, we have a new employee as well, that, that takes time to train and devote that time. So hopefully this week, we can call Patty Murray. I hope to call Patty Murray and just give her my two cents. And I encourage every City Council member to just call and say, hey, what can we do?
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm not really disparaging what you guys have been up to. I'm actually really impressed, and I really thank you. But I do feel like we need to put the, replacing that transmission line right on the top of the, well, okay, I'm sorry. You know, I understand the concerns about the clear well. That seems pretty, is there a way, I mean, Um, you know, I understand the concerns about the clear well. That seems pretty, is there a way, I mean, that clear well's not that old. So, and, and also the repairs are not that old. So I'm wondering, is there a way to, um, I'm getting off topic here, but is there a way to recoup some of that from the company that, that put that thing in?
I think it's over twenty year, twenty years old. And then we did that, that, uh, that repair last year and they told us it might work, it might not. And it was kind of a chance that we took.
If I can add one thing really quick, everybody keeps bringing up my little email about Patty Murray. First of all, they don't all have to be shovel-ready projects. It's a wish list for infrastructure. They haven't even decided what shovel-ready means yet. They haven't even defined that. So that's why I sent it to the public works guys thinking, put your wish list down from storm water to the transmission line to the clear well to, um, the computer system in there. Uh, everything you can think of, put it on that wish list and, and get it an email to them. And that at least starts our ball rolling. It's a ways off yet. We've got plenty of time yet. But don't feel like it's gotta be a, an actual, hey, we're putting the shovels in the ground as soon as you give us the check. Because they don't even know what shovel-ready means yet. They haven't defined it. And that was another meeting I had this last week on Friday. So we got plenty of time, but I want you guys to put a wish list together and, and get it in an email at some point. And I know you've been busy with lots of stuff. Believe me, I understand. I've got lots of meetings too. And you guys have done a great job. Let's wish list, put it together, get it out in an email as soon as you guys can get a chance to do that. And I think it sounds like a new employer is going to be great to help you with that. You're doing a great job. Stay positive and we'll get through it. Okay?
Yeah. So we'll work with Theo and probably just send that project list that we have currently made up and, and see if we need to add anything and, or bring it back to the council and see if there's needs to be anything added or, uh, taken off as a priority.
Hey, this, uh, I would like to just, if you could email out five projects to all council members and we can go and call our congressional representatives with these same five projects. Squeaking wheel gets the grease, but what's really important is for a mayor to call them. Is a mayor usually will get an actual phone call back. Somebody that's just speaking from vast experience, we'll get an email, we'll get an aid. But if we can get everybody on board, the same five projects and call, we can get this done.
We'll work on a, we'll work on a list and like I said, hopefully by next meeting, we can have something we can, uh, we can vote on. If that's okay.
Sounds good to me.
We need a vote. I don't think we need a vote. You guys got the list. Just send it out.
I just want to make sure we're not, uh, uh, doing what we're not supposed to with outside communication out of public meetings. It was brought up earlier in the meeting. I want to make sure that nobody's doing that and we don't do that.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the public works committee give us five top projects and submit it to email.
I'll second that.
Yep.
Any discussion on this motion, council? All in favor of the public works committee sending out five projects to all council and mayor for comments to the different representatives and senators, say aye.
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 Anybody opposes this, say nay in your name. Probably public works committee. I think we've already listed probably all of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it shouldn't be George.
Member share, let's make it consistent so that all, all the communications to the state and the federal government, uh, are consistent from the city of Roslyn.
Good conversation.
Thank you Kathy for starting that.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got, uh, an FPA. Um, I don't know if Leah or Michelle want to explain why we're doing this. Leah, would you like to explain this? Well, here, let's, let's make a motion to pass it first.
I'll make a motion to pass the, uh, FPA's presented.
I'll second that. Okay, go ahead Leah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so it came to our attention basically from DNR that through, um, a citizen comment to their forest practice application board that, um, the work that we are proposing constitutes a substantive change, um, from the amendment and related five day map that, uh, council previously approved at the last meeting. And so, um, you know, DNR kind of did their work and came and had, we had a phone call. And so they discovered that through their own processes, they had, um, some procedural errors, basically, uh, how they had to identify procedural errors. And that, um, this, what was being considered a substantive change for DNR is not, is not actually something they have to find, which is part of what their procedural process is, which they'll have to work on. And so we are, so from this phone call, um, the managers there asked that, you know, kind of the most, um, clean way to, to, uh, um, repeal or cancel, I guess, whatever you want to say, are the amendment we had put in, draft a new forest practice application that would be, um, not a long-term one, but a three-year one. And that, um, that would kind of satisfy, you know, their requirements in terms of, uh, processing. Everything that had been approved, there was that one small, um, stream type that had already been approved, changed. And so that will hold. And so if we approve this, then what would happen is, um, our existing long-term application would be affect. And then after a, hopefully a fourteen day review period from DNR, then this new, uh, forest practice application was to precede that and take over. And so I also, so it's, it's what we've already all discussed after the forum and you all voted on. There's no change in scope of work or anything like that. Um, however, I do want to
Oh God.
address the, um, ongoing conversation we're having about the, uh, LSP and the, um, you know, this trees per acre that we've continued to discuss and this concern with, um, you know, basically that in some areas, there's not a lot of healthy green trees that haven't been attacked by western pine beetle. And so, um, but one thing that we need to remember and consider is that first of all, our forester from AFM used the LSP to create these prescriptions. These prescriptions are for each stand and they are based on what is described as in the LSP, future desired conditions. So that's not right now. It's in the future. That means that we are trying to manage the forest so that in the future, it will look like what it is described in the LSP and what the intent was. And yes, that takes time, right? I mean, I'm, you know, there's no getting around that. It's going to take time for trees to regenerate and we're going to have to monitor that. Um, but this, uh, the, you know, we've already talked about the struggle, right? And can't really balance the basal area and the trees per acre because of the growth that's happened and because of the tree mortality that has already happened and the trees that are already infested. So we, the idea is that we are treating the forest and it will grow into what is desired. Based on, you know, all the work that James Begley put into the land stewardship plan and, uh, um, you know, conditions before it was clear cut, basically, many hundred years plus ago. Um, the other thing I want to, and I'm sorry, I don't, I can stop there if anyone has questions on that. And then I can go to the next thing I have in relation.
Is there, Leah, is there a timeframe that this forest grows into our desired outcome? I mean, is it ten years, five years? Well, I mean, is there like a best case scenario and a worst case scenario?
That's a great question, Jeff. Um, I, I don't have the answer to that. I can certainly work on that and I'm gonna, um, write this down. So give me one second. Um, I don't know. So yeah, good question. Thank you.
Jeff, I think that, uh, I think it's more of a twenty to twenty-five year regrowth kind of situation to get to the desired outcomes. But Leah will check that out.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, I mean it. Yes. Any other questions from council right now before I go into the next thing? No? Okay. So, um, so you know, we, this approach, right, is to address this western pine beetle continued outbreak that we have, um, as well as the overall forest health, concern about the risk of catastrophic wildfire. And so, um, on the western pine beetle issue, uh, in the CAC meeting, we, uh, you know, there's, there's ongoing concern about logging during the beetle's flight period. Um, and, you know, if, if you weren't in an outbreak, you certainly wouldn't, um, want, you would want to avoid logging in that time. Uh, CAC requests that I reach out to Glenn Kohler, um, at DNR entomologist who has, was on the forum and has provided, um, quite a bit of feedback to us. And I'm just gonna, I have forwarded that email to everyone on council. Um, and I just want to point out a couple of things. Obviously he's not, you know, able of course to offer any kind of blessing or, um, you know, otherwise condone any activity. He said that while thinning during an outbreak isn't ideal, it can be an ongoing, it can be an alternative to ongoing mortality. Thinning will improve the leaf tree's access to resources of water, light and nutrients uh, to increase vigor and defend against bark beetle attacks over time. That is not of course an instant, um, uh, impact. And of course the logging has its own, uh, impact on the land. And then, um, as well as opening the stands up does increase airflow, which can disperse the bark beetle attracted pheromones. So I'm hoping that that, if there's, you know, kind of some questions about that, I understand it's not ideal, but we're not in an ideal situation. And we need to, uh, just like all the other many projects we have, we have to keep moving forward. And I know that, uh, not everyone agrees with my stance on this. And, um, I'm trying to do what I think is the most good for the most people in Roslyn. Um, and I don't want to wait for another emergency, you know? So I think that's all I've got. Um, also, sorry, really quick, Jen Lipton, I'm so sorry I didn't mention the, um, you and Dane Jepson coming to our CAC meeting. I really appreciate that, um, outreach and I'm sure we will be in contact to move forward on some fun projects. Thanks.
And real quick, councilors and mayor, I, I would like to point out that Glenn's comments, uh, after Leah and CAC asked for some, uh, better answers or not, or just answers, um, are on the town cloud in the section where the comments, uh, are from citizens. In case you want to read them, although it sounds like we forwarded them.
I, I'd like to point out that there's, um, Glenn Kohler's talking about two, two things. He's talking about what happens when you thin during a beetle outbreak. Uh, we've been, um, in an outbreak now for, I don't know, five years or, or maybe more than that. And then there's the other issue of thinning during the pine beetle flight period. And that's a different situation because what happens when you thin during the flight period is you actually attract more beetles to, um, live trees. So.
Lost you Kathy.
There's a new one now, but, um, that, um, they would approve the, uh, forest practices application if there was word from Glenn Kohler that he thought it was okay to, uh, thin during the flight period, which is what we're being asked to do, to thin during the flight period. And I read through his email, it's, it's a really complex situation. And he's, uh, talking to a lot of different things, but at no point does he say, yes, let's thin during a beetle flight period because that's not a good situation. And, um, given that, um, I'm, I just think this is a bad idea.
I know we had that special meeting a couple of weeks ago and they said, we're not in just an outbreak, but we're in an emergency outbreak situation where we need to do some, we need to act now. And the recommendation is not to do it in a flight, uh, flight period. But now because we're in an emergency outbreak, that we don't have time like that, that we have, we should be doing it now. So we are seeing these conflicting points of views from specialists. So I just want to know, what do we, what do you, what does the rest of everybody that is against this, what's the solution? We're just going to keep letting our trees die? We're just going to keep letting our forests turn brown and die? Like I have two trees at our Plum Creek office that are infected by this beetle. It's like, what, what is our plan? Just to sit back and update the LSP and hopefully do this next winter? Like, I, I don't get why we're, we're still talking about this as a OMG factor. Then how do we s- have a solution for the problem that we have? How do we pay for this problem that we have? Logging the logs that have a timber market to the Yakima Nation, which the Yakima Nation even gives us permission to do that. That's a, I thought a huge thing that nobody ever talked about. And then all these other re- recommendations from, um, state agencies. So it's again, we're in an emergency outbreak, which Glenn Kohler doesn't really put in his letter. We're, we, this was, that was brought up by another professional that we shouldn't be waiting, that we should be acting now. So again, what is the solution then?
Can't hear Kathy.
Alright, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I think, I think what we're trying to do here is to, to not make the situation worse. And, and that's what could happen if we, um, log during the flight period.
But it could happen if we don't do anything too.
If there's only ten healthy trees per acre, it's already almost as bad as it wants to get.
Go walk up in the forest and look how bad it's getting and gotten. It's like, I walk it every day and the, behind the slag piles is dying and we're not doing anything about it or moving any quicker on doing anything. We're hiding behind an LSP that hasn't been updated for over ten years. The old CAC group didn't move forward on doing this and we have to move forward.
I think the other topic we haven't discussed is if everybody wanted to go back a few years, put yourself during Jolly Mountain in the fire that was several miles away. And we've got a fire basically sitting right behind us right now. And I'm not, I, I am not going through another summer like Jolly Mountain. And we have more of a fire danger now. And Hillary Franz just wrote us a letter two weeks ago that was stated months ago that we were worse than paradise or we made it just like paradise. And I, you know, I'm sorry, but I can't sit here and watch this forest stay the state it is and have the idea that we could have a fire that close to town. This isn't miles, this is feet from our town right now. Um, I, I'm sorry, but I think we really need to reflect on the other issues just as well, um, catastrophic wildfire. This isn't miles away. This is a hundred feet away, a hundred yards away. Um, I think that is, to me, that's the most important thing at this, in my mind with these dead trees and the pines that outline our city right now. Um, that's really my big concern. I'm not about to jeopardize my city or our city and residents to the fire because we lack cutting dead trees that we have an infestation in. And, um, I think this goes hand in hand with the transmission line. Um, we put just as much effort and want to take care of that. And I think this is no different. And it's just in catastrophic wildfire with the conditions that were left.
I'd have to agree. We don't want to make it worse. But doing nothing is not making it better.
Nope.
So we need to do something.
Alright then, all in favor of sending this FCA to? All right, then, all in favor of sending this FCA to DNR, say aye.
Say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay and your name, please.
Uh, this is Kathy Cook and I oppose this.
Any other opposition, council? Okay, the FPA will be sent. Next up, we've got basically an intro discussion to the six-year transportation improvement plan. Leah, do you want to say anything to start this off?
Uh, as much as anything, it's kind of a mix of plans that already existed from the COF plan and the Tiana Waya plan, as well as what was developed last year while we were going through and doing some of the paving work around town. Effectively identifying what could be, what are the highest priorities and kind of trying to mix it throughout the town there. In addition to that, there's essentially two projects per year right now, which we're a little light just because of the amount of funding available. But the idea is to get something on there that's probably going to need some sort of grant level funding or something along those lines, a little more CIP level. But then something that we should be able to pay for through our existing transportation funds refund there.
I appreciate the map. Looks good to me.
Yeah, overall, it accounts between $500,000 and $600,000, which we'd like to go for more in the future. But again, just what's available right now through the transportation improvement board. With the CAR tab, that was a big one as well. It reduced a lot of available funding there. But it is, we're trying to pick back up. We got some overlays and potholes filled last year there and essentially just want to continue on with that effort.
I just have one question. This is probably a dumb question. And I saw that in 2026, we will be building a road out through the Forterra property as an exit route out of town. And I think that's a great idea. We need that. But my, my question is, how are we able to build a road on somebody else's property? There must be an answer.
Easements.
Oh, so we already have easements?
We can, we can apply for an easement during the construction.
Okay, thank you.
We already have them. We have them too.
I was gonna say that road's already there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good question too, Kathy. One of the reasons I put that kind of at the very last as well is the chance to see what Forterra is going to propose there and make sure that they don't have a slightly different alignment, something we can work out for the easements there. So no, it's, it's a good question for sure.
Yeah, and I, thank you. I appreciate that, that it makes sense to wait and let Forterra, see how Forterra wants to configure their property. That makes sense.
Indeed. That was one that was from the 2019 COF plan as well, which I wanted to make sure we were aligned with the six-year CIP as well as the COF plan. And it did. If it wasn't for Forterra, that one would be a lot more towards the front of the pack there, so.
Something to be added, and I think we'll talk about this on Public Works again, but Second Street, that dip, that is, it's a horrible dip. We need to address that on a, a project here too. It's getting worse and worse.
Is that the one from Montana, between Montana and like, is it Wyoming there or the?
It's right in the middle of, on Second Street.
Nolan, hey, yeah, we already got that on the project list.
Oh, sweet. Thank you.
We were gonna, we were gonna fill the holes the other day with their full water, so, but we're gonna actually soft cut that out and repair it right.
Cool. Never mind. Thank you so much, Baba.
All right, so I guess we'll just end the discussion on that. This will all be in front of you all again soon. I guess all we have left is the mayor council concerns. Let me start real quick. I would like to point out that it was suggested that council respond to the communications that come in because the communications are, you know, designed for me and you guys. I'd like to hear your thoughts on how we could do that. Could I, could I just send them to you or, I mean, it seems like almost all of them that come in, you guys are getting. I mean, almost all the emails, you guys get those emails. And I'm just wondering how we can coordinate some kind of response from council. I don't know if we have to have this, you know, a discussion like this at the end of the, the following meeting, that next up meeting, and then say, okay, will you please, you know, respond to Angela and this other person responds to Doug and so forth. I mean, obviously staff has already responded all the ones for this week, but if we can change it and, you know, and maybe even take this off of staff's plate, I'd be all for it.
Can staff?
I think we can respond to like the clerk individually. We can't be put on a group text.
Yeah.
Individually, we can respond to the clerk and that's that. And that's not violating a public meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me see if we can come up with something. Yeah, go ahead, Kathy.
Oh, this is Leah. I just wonder if, I mean, we might be able to figure it out now or if we just need kind of a little work session because I think, you know, within this vein of citizen comments, figuring out how, you know, council that's willing and able to, and we're appropriate, right, to respond. And so maybe we might need a little more time to kind of figure out that system or just in the meantime, respond to you and the clerk email saying, you know, I would like to respond to this citizen. And that way, you know, if more than one council member is going to provide comment back, you know, that's fine. It's not the, you know, we're not taking for the whole council if we do that, right? That would be a separate process whereby we're bringing stuff to the next meeting and discussing it, which I'm all for and would be happy to help with that because I think that we do need to, staff needs to be able to do the work that there is in their jobs to help administer the business of the city. And, you know, not to take away at all from public involvement, but just trying to work on a, a better system for that. So I guess I'm volunteering to help with that.
I, well, I, I agree with both Jeff and Leah there. And yeah, if somebody were just to say, you know, when you all get it, just reply to the clerk and me and say, oh, I'd be willing to do this one, that kind of thing. And then obviously, we're in a learning curve here, so we'll, we'll have to adapt.
Is this regards to public comment and answering public comment? Is that?
No, that's a little, that's a little different. I haven't really figured out how we're going to handle that. I, I want to definitely do that as well, but this is more the written ones that come in to everybody.
I got you.
Like I said, they, they seem to email you all every time, so.
Yeah.
So you see them already. So we'll, we'll, we'll figure something out. We'll try to be more transparent and we'll try to be more communicative and, and, and help answer the questions that are coming in to everybody. And take pressure off staff so that, like Leah said, they can stick with the business of the city. That's all I have.
It was brought up earlier in a public comment, city meetings upstairs in our gymnasium? Or just in general, when can we start meeting in person as a council?
I second that thought.
Yeah, so the, the major issue that we have is, is the setup. So you've got to, basically what we could have in this room would be just the council.
Yep.
And we have to have, we have to have a way to run it through the computer that we would have each individual person has a microphone that can be heard because the rest of the public is still going to be virtual. And, and then everybody has to wear masks, obviously. So we just really don't have the setup at current. So it's been the recommendation of the attorney to just continue to hold them virtually at this time. But, you know, if we've got a way to set that up and then we've got to maintain the six foot of distance as well. So it would actually be pushing to get all of council and staff in here for that meeting. So we'd have to, I mean, we'd have to figure that out, but those are the, those are the obstacles to it, I guess.
Okay.
CDC recommendation is 10 people mashed up, six feet apart.
Does it matter if you're vaccinated or not?
Does not matter at this point.
Okay. And also, maybe just to be clear, we cannot use, from my understanding, we cannot use anything upstairs because of insurance.
Yeah, we can't use, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, so we'd have seven council members, the mayor is eight. And then I guess Sarah and I were in attendance, that would be 10.
Or one of you guys there and the other on Zoom.
Yeah, either way. So yeah, I guess all I'm getting at is we won't be able to have any public meetings.
So my other, my other thought too is when can we have staff and possibly we'll have staff in the office working and then also the library? When can we start having library with operational somewhat hours?
No, I don't, I, I don't see any way to get the kind of space in the library that we need. So I'm going to hold off on that one until we get to, I, I see that the, the state has already require or requesting that the six foot be brought down to three foot. So if that were the case, you know, I could, I could revisit that kind of thing.
Yeah.
As far as the, I mean, the office works full-time, you know, as well as the librarian. So everybody's working. As far as opening the office up, you know, I don't know, I would really like it if the governor and the state health and the county health were a little bit more generous in what they're going to allow. I don't really see that any other cities are allowing a whole lot yet, even though they have much bigger buildings. I, you know, I'll, I'll keep, I'll keep measuring based on what the governor does. When we get to phase, whatever's next to, you know, I don't know that that's going to afford us any difference as far as our building goes, especially the library. But something beyond that, which could be, you know, within a month or as vaccinations increase, I, I think that changes will come around. But I mean, I really honestly think we're looking more at summer or the end of summer before I'd be comfortable with it and before, before even the governor is going to allow anything like that.
I will add to what you said, Mr. Mayor, that was on a call Monday night with the recovery committee to put together some information for Dr. Larson. He's on a committee for the governor right now to kind of line out what phase three and phase four will entail. We're all pushing to go back to a county-wide concept and not a regional concept. And then he was asking for some input on some metrics. So I would assume you're going to hear something on the governor's office in the next probably two and a half, three weeks as regards to what phase three will be and what, if any, new metrics there will be. And if you really will abandon this regional concept, which doesn't apply to Kidattas County, in my opinion. So it's coming, it's a little ways off. Dr. Larson is writing a summary of new metrics. He wants out of the regional concept, as everybody in the county does, so we get more control back for our own county. So I would assume you'll hear something on the governor's office in about two to three weeks. And I'll keep you posted while I hear the meetings on Friday.
That's good to hear. So if we're done with that topic, I have one thing I'd like to ask.
Please.
So we have three new hires in the public works department. I'm curious if any of the, I don't know any of them. Are any of them able to take the training to be, to do, do the water management?
Yes, the lead, Baba Simplot, is, was did a decade in Clay Island. And we're going to send him to the class that Cory took just recently. And at that point, he would be able to take the test for that second level certification.
That's great.
He's got all the hours required, basically.
He also stated that Will from Viola has been real helpful on helping them and the other two guys just to get knowledge with the water system as well. So it sounds like all three of them are getting somewhat of knowledge on the water system. Anything else before I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Thanks. I'd like to say thanks to all the public work guys getting out there and getting the job done.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you up to all the city council.
Thanks for joining us, Baba.
Yeah.
Hey, no problem. You're great.
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.